Welcome everyone, the Board of Education meeting is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for being here, welcome. Secretary Torres, please take role.
Here's all board members are present.
Colleagues, let's now move on to the approval of the agenda. Unless there are objections, tonight's agenda will be approved as printed. Alright, excellent. College, let's move on out to this very exciting part of our agenda, the oath of office for our newly elected members. This evening, we are pleased to welcome the Honorable Judge Kuhn, a dear friend of this board, to administer the oath of office to our newly elected members, Elizabeth McGregor and Kim Songkran. Judge Kuhn, thank you so much for joining us. Members McGregor and Songkran, if you would please join the Honorable Judge Kuhn at the podium.
Thank you President Ristic. Are you ready ladies? You have been provided copies if you'd like to follow, or you can simply raise your right hands and repeat after me. If you'll kindly raise your right hands and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Michigan
and the Constitution of the State of Michigan
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
Office of Member
Office of Member
of the Board of Education of the Waterford, Michigan School District
of the Board of Education of the Waterford School District
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
congratulations to each of you.
If I can just jump in here.
Yes sir.
I don't know if everyone realizes that Judge Kuhn is a graduate of Waterford, I believe seventy-eight from Kendal.
Thanks Rob.
I'm here to help, I'm here to help. But again, it's just, it's, you know, people say, well, what do people do, what's happening? This is a graduate of Waterford School, so, thank you.
Appointed personal privilege then, I'd like to, not only me, my dear wife is a graduate, my three brothers and sisters, my wife's brother as well, but more recently, of course, my four kids, two nephews and nieces. And, you know, just kudos to the Waterford School District, not only have they prepared, you know, my generation and other generations, but my kids' generations, three of them have completed college, two of them are teachers, one in Grand Blank, one in Clarkson, one is a high school head coach for the swim team in Grand Blank. And the kids have done wonderfully, and I attribute that to the fine staff and administration here in the Waterford School District. So, kudos to you and the board, thanks Rob.
There's a rock and a break. And Susan, if we could please get the telephone number of Judge Kuhn's children, so we can bring them here, that would be terrific. We appreciate you. Okay, we are now going to welcome up Principal Kyle Schultz to introduce some very special guests from Pierce Middle School. I'm intrigued.
Alright guys, thanks for having us today. In honor of the January being Board Appreciation Month, and us in at Pierce recognizing what a service this job is, and how important it is to our community, we wanted to give you a gift that highlights the programs at Pierce that you support so importantly. If you look, Mr. Martin there is passing out salad that is procured from our greenhouse as part of our aquaponics class that our students harvest. The lettuce and carrots come right from that greenhouse. The bowl that is in, the wood bowl, although it looks like generic, if you look at the bottom of the bowl. Shelley's always a distraction. It's the story of my life right now. If you, if you look at the bottom of the bowl, if you hold it up, I know it's kind of dangerous, but you hold it up, you've got the Pierce School District, school name on it. And then, the new logo that was designed by a student last year is part of a logo contest done by our art teacher, Ms. Dunham. That was student designed, and that was put in on there, laser engraved by Mr. Barrow, one of our other elective teachers who has a great program. We found out today that him and Shelley and our office manager are the only ones that were there when the time capsule was put in twenty-five years ago at Pierce, so, we established that. They've been running for a long time and do a great job. So I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Martin, who is super talented and super passionate, does a great job with our kids in running a one-of-a-kind, as far as I know, program over at Pierce.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Schultz.
I don't know.
Or maybe not, that's okay. Yeah, so I'm John Martin, you know, I'm at Pierce Middle School. I've been teaching eighth grade here in Waterford District for the last twenty-three years. Started at Crary for eight years, and then I've been fifteen here at Pierce. And back in two thousand and seven, my principal at the time, Lynn Kazinsky, had said, hey, we're looking for some more eighth grade electives. Do you guys have any ideas? And I'm like, well, my master's degree is actually in agriculture. Before I came to Waterford, I was a research specialist at the University of the Virgin Islands Agricultural Experiment Station. And so, from then, I came up with the aquaponics class. And so, what aquaponics is, basically, it's a combination of aquaculture and hydroponics. You know, like it says, aquaculture is the culture of aquatic organisms as an agricultural product. Whereas hydroponics is the culture of terrestrial plants without soil, instead using a nutrient solution as the growth medium. And aquaponics is the combination of the two technologies, where the fish waste is used as a fertilizer for the plants, and the plants, as they absorb the waste from the flow of water, help to clean it up for the fish. It's a bit of a symbiotic relationship. And so, in the greenhouse, you know, as you can see from Hatchery Road, if you've ever driven by, you'll see the lights on in there. We have four different systems. The greenhouse was built, I believe, five years ago, was it? With the farm-to-school grant that the district had acquired. And so, we have the traditional aquaponic system that I had even in my classroom at Crary, which contains the fish. But we've also have some other systems as well, we have what's called a nutrient film technique system, or the tube system right here. There's a Beito bucket system. And so, those two systems are both hydroponic systems, which rely on just nutrients that we mix ourselves. And then, there's more of a traditional raised bed system, because I wanted the students to have, you know, multiple different systems to experiment with, because the fanciest is the aquaponic system. But in reality, if they're going to transfer any of this to their lives, it's really going to be the raised bed system, the traditional system, that they can then do in their backyard. And a big component of what we learn is just gardening, really. And so, things that the students learn in the class are, you know, system operation and maintenance, the aquaculture industry, where that stands in the state, in the country, and worldwide. Fish anatomy and morphology, that's always one of the big thrills, is when I bring a bunch of fish in and we do the dissection, we learn all about the anatomy and morphology of the fish. It gets pretty squeamish, but that's part of the fun. Nutrition and feeding of the fish, water quality management, growth characteristics like food conversion ratios and survival and that sort of thing. Plant life cycle and propagation, you know, because we do raise all the plants. Really, the bulk of our work is with the plants, probably seventy-five percent of what the kids do is working with the plants. Plant care and nutrition, plant lighting, and these are brand-new, just installed these this past summer. These are new LED lights that took over for the old metal halide lights. And this was through my latest Waterford Foundation grant, which I'm always thankful for, when they pitch in and help with some extra money. And they've been working well, these new LED lights. Sales and marketing, and, you know, at the end of each year, we sell the fish, and it's a big bruhaha. But part of it is the kids will come up with ad campaigns, they'll do commercials, they'll put up posters, that kind of thing. So this is something that this girl Jazz Hall did a couple of years back.
Hi, I'm Jazz Hall from the aquaponics class, and this Friday, Tuesday, we're selling, we're selling goldfish, they're in good condition. And they are only two dollars for two fish, and they come for like a week.
So she's pretty quiet, but that's the gist, and sometimes they do like a serious commercial, or sometimes they try to make a humorous commercial, and then we'll do that in the morning announcements. So, a couple, like about a month before with the fish sale, we'll start doing the commercials for the morning announcements to get the kids kind of, you know, juiced up for the sale. And like I said, traditional gardening is a big part of it. These are my current students, this semester's students, and, you know, we went down to the, you guys, I'm sure have seen this big yellow tent, the Van Hoyt Farmers, and so we went down there, just walked down from school and got pumpkins and gourds and, you know, some other fresh veggies. And, you know, I like to stress to the kids also that, you know, agriculture is a business, it's a very big industry, especially in the state of Michigan. So, we talk about agribusiness, and we do enterprise budgets and that sort of thing as well. So, other things the students do in the class, just kind of routine maintenance. You know, they take care of feeding. Each day, we'll take water samples to measure for total dissolved solids and pH, and then, you know, we'll make a judgment, say, okay, how much do we need to add to this system or that system? And the kids will weigh it out and put it into the systems. Keep track of production data. And then, of course, is the big fish sale. You know, planting a lot of seeds, you know, we, in front of you, the lettuce you have, that was just harvested today. It's a mix of romaine and green leaf lettuce, and that was in the tube system or the NFT system. And in your little basket, or your bowl, the carrots, they're a little bit runty, but that was then done in our raised bed system. So, that came from the greenhouse today. So, plant seeds, transplant seedlings, harvest produce. The cukes you have aren't from our system, we had lots and lots, but those plants have kind of petered out with the cold weather and the lack of light. We have new seedlings coming along inside the classroom, so once the new seedlings are ready to transplant, we'll get those guys going in the Beito bucket system. But typically, I mean, we'll harvest, I don't know, probably six or seven pounds of lettuce in about forty cucumbers each week. And that's prepared lettuce for market. And what's really cool is, we'll eat some of it, or we'll give some away, but most of it actually is taken up to the cafeteria. So we'll weigh it out, and then at the end of the year, I'll come up with an invoice, agree with the price of the invoice, and then, they'll actually give money from Food Services to my program. It'll just be like an interdepartmental transfer, which helps with expenses. And then, they serve it on the lunch program. And so, what makes it fun for the kids is it's, you know, a unique, modern technology, something you're not going to come across every day, especially at the middle school level. You know, they're doing almost all the management, you know, they check the water quality, they feed the fish, they harvest, they plant, they transplant. And a big thing for me has always been that they gain an appreciation for agriculture and where their food comes from. I mean, a lot of kids, you know, if they live in a suburban area, there's no connection to their food, except for, hey, I'm going to buy it from the store or get it at the cafeteria. And so here, they really get to see how it's done, and so they're into that. And so, that's what they do with the aquaponics, and I hope you guys enjoy your lettuce and carrots.
Mr. Martin, that was amazing, thank you so much. And thank you for all the goodies, this is incredible. Colleagues, I want to give you, remember Torres, please.
So, what grades can do this?
Typically, it's an eighth grade elective. I'll usually have about eighteen to twenty students in there, which is enough to do the jobs that we need to do. You know, each day, we'll divide up, you know, the jobs, like, okay, I need you guys to do these transplants, so I need you guys to check water quality. Some days are busier than others, and there's always the classwork component to it as well. And we do the stuff, the hands-on part keeps them interested, but there's some technical aspects to it as well, you know, as we're, you know, calculating, you know, food conversion ratios or that sort of thing, or we're looking at the budgets.
So, is there a greenhouse then, at the school?
Oh yeah, yeah, it's right behind the building. It's, I think that's why I've been in the same classroom for fifteen years, because it's the closest classroom, which I meant before. It's the closest classroom to the back doors where the greenhouse is. So we go back and forth between the classroom and the greenhouse.
Fantastic, wow, very impressed, thank you.
Well, I have always loved this program, I was always sad that my three children, it didn't work out when they were all in eighth grade at Pierce to have taken it, because I love the greenhouse, and I've had the coveted goldfish. We've had them at our house. I wanted to let you know that we had a friend that it survived three years, mine did not. Biggest goldfish ever, was amazing. But this is such a phenomenal program, I want to let you know that I brag about this to people outside of our district, because I've always been super proud of the program that you brought to Pierce. And I think that this is such, this is one of the cool things that we do, that people don't recognize. And I just, kudos to you for doing this, and it's just very exciting to see and to actually get some of the lettuce, so, thank you.
This makes sense, because my boys came home last year, and they're like, dad, we need to buy a fish. Sort of show of Schultz running over there, that's, you know.
Well, now you know what.
Now I know, now I know. Remember McGregor, please.
I just want to say I love this, so I actually am in the process of setting up hydroponics at my house. So I love that the kids are doing this, because I was amazed at how much I learned through gardening. And as somebody who's trained as a scientist and engineer, I'm very excited, because this is so important for kids to see how science affects their everyday life.
And it's fun, because we eat the things, like in the raised bed, which you didn't see, I mean, we'll also grow like basil. And so, we always, we'll pick the basil, and then I'll make pesto pasta for the kids in class. Or, like this year, I had sunflowers grown at my home in my garden, and it's not something we grew, but I had these huge sunflower heads, and so I brought the sunflowers in, and we, you know, took them out, or, what's the term for it? Anyway, we removed the seeds from the head, and then we baked them ourselves. I sent some home with the kids, and I baked a lot at home. And so, I've got a big bag that, you know, when we're, if we're working on some classwork assignment, I'll just come around with a little cup and give them the sunflower seeds, and we'll munch on them while we're eating.
Remember Patricia, please.
Oh, the lettuce is very, very good.
Just picked today. But do wash it though.
Like it really matters to me.
Well, thank you, you three for coming, and Mr. Martin for showing us this amazing program, we're so lucky to have you. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, we appreciate that. Okay. Colleagues, let's now move on to public comments on action items. I do not, it, there's a lot of stuff up here, but I do not think that I have any green cards at the moment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening on items that we will be voting on? Okay. Very good. Okay, we're now going to move on to President's Update, which is, I'm going to go down there.
Do you want to take your lettuce? Like your sneeze?
You probably want some rinse it off.
Alright, so it is January sixteenth, our first meeting in January, we all know what that means. It is our organizational meeting. I know a couple of you have seen this a couple of times over the years, but it is, it's a time to welcome our new board members on. It is in our bylaws that we provide a new board member orientation. Also provides us a really great opportunity to speak to our community about the role of a school board, so, that's what this is. So I will move through this as quickly as possible. Kim, Elizabeth, if there are questions, please ask. And you don't just have to ask me, you can also ask your colleagues, your new colleagues. Okay, so here we go. So we know here in Waterford, we are inspired, educated, and empowered to thrive. We are coming up on the end of our two thousand and twenty-six strategic plan. And we will make sure to get this to Kim and to Elizabeth, because that is a hyperlink to our strategic plan. We know in that strategic plan, we have this mission, we provide exemplary educational experiences for each student to thrive. And we have these strategic goal areas. And as we go through the year together, our administrative colleagues will be sure to update us on their goals in these areas, as well as provide a little bit of a snapshot of where we've been over the last, almost five years, since we started this whole thing. Our strategic goal areas are our academics and our programs, personnel and leadership, our operations, our communications and community engagement, and our learning environment and culture. So those have been our five areas of focus. It's important, because our strategic plan, it drives what we do, our vision, our mission, and our strategic plan, and the accompanying goals, that's how we make our decisions, right? It gives us, all of us seven, a point of reference, things to talk about, we have these goals. And so, what we spend so much of our time deliberating on and working with our administrative colleagues on, is how do we make these goals come to life? So again, we're going to go over a couple of things really quick, we're going to talk a little bit about process. We're going to talk about the distinct roles of a Board of Education and the Superintendent. As I already said, our bylaws specify new member orientation, so we'll check this off the list when we're done. It is Board of Education Appreciation Month, so it gives us a good chance to talk about and reaffirm our roles and commitments. It's organizational meetings, and most importantly, understanding the sort of unique role of a school board and doing it well contributes to student success, and that's why all of each of us is here. So we're going to start off a little bit by taking a look at the law, so this is, this comes from Michigan law, and it talks about the essential duties and roles of a sup, excuse me, of a Board of Education. And then, we're going to compare that to our board policies, because some things change. So, just, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these, I'll read the bold parts here. But this says that Boards of Education are granted a lot of power to oversee, to run a school district, okay? And here we go, here are the specifics. Board of Education duties, your job, our job, to educate pupils, provide for the safety and welfare of our students. We acquire, construct, maintain, repair, renovate, dispose of, transfer school property. We upkeep our infrastructure, our buildings, our buses, the things that we own. We also hire contract force scheduling, supervise terminate employees, independent contractors. We receive money, we invest money, we expend public school money. So, according to Michigan law, these are some of the things we do. We enter into agreements, contracts, or cooperative arrangements with other entities, township, private companies. We know too, that boards have to vote on things. And no action is lawful unless it's been voted on and passed by a majority vote. That's why we're here, we vote. And we know too, that any district has to adopt bylaws, rules of the road, ways for us to do our business. And, we have this whole thing called our board policies. Those are online, I'm sure all of us, you know, those who've been here for a while are familiar with these. But these are the parameters for board action, administrator decision-making, and general teaching and learning within the district. And I'll give us an example here in one moment. So often, I know I've always, I had this view when I first came on, so if you read what Michigan law says, we have this impression that, wow, Boards of Education, they do it all. Well, they don't, and they can't. Because we have to follow, well, federal law, and again, I know this might seem obvious, we have to follow federal law, state law and the Open Meetings Act. We have local law, we have our own board policies, and then we also have Robert's Rules, which are really our rulebook for how we conduct our meetings. And if we take a look at our board policy, there's this really important passage. The Board of Education vests the primary responsibility for administration of this district in the Superintendent of Schools. The appointment of that officer is therefore one of the most important functions the board can perform. So if we compare what Michigan law says, hey, Boards of Education do all these things, and then you take a look at what our board policy says, it says that we hire and pay a highly qualified administrator to oversee the day-to-day functions of the district. Our Board of Ed policies also spell out the role of the board, and how we engage with our administrative colleagues. So our policies, it is the primary duty of the board to establish policies, and that of the Superintendent to administer such policies. So we come up with the big stuff, and then our amazing. So we come up with the big stuff and then our amazing, talented team over here, they talk about how do you make those big things actionable and implement them throughout all, all the levels of the institution. The superintendent as the chief administrative officer of the school district is the primary professional advisor to the board. So at the end of the day, the board interacts on a regular basis and most often with the superintendent. They are, according to our Board of Ed policies and best practice, they are our number one employee, our only employee, and consequently serve as the liaison between the board, the administration, the principals, and the rest of our district. These are some responsibilities of the superintendent. We know that the superintendent has to be at our meetings, they serve as a consultant, they help get us information. And then we do the deliberating, the debating, and the voting. They are our counsel when it comes to issues, initiatives, and things that we need to take action on. Superintendent is our chief representative of the board for the purpose of negotiation and bargaining for our, our collective bargaining units and unions. So they are our primary representative. The board is responsible for determining the success of the superintendent and meeting the goals established by the board through annual evaluations of the superintendent's performance. So understanding that the board vests the superintendent with the, the great responsibility of overseeing the day-to-day functions, it's our, it's our responsibility to make sure they have clear goals, the resources to do those things, and we give them feedback and let them know how they're doing. Because we, we want them to be successful because that also means we're being successful. And we will have our annual training around the superintendent evaluation in February. It's a robust year-long process and is a really great point, touchstone for all of us to be able to talk about goals, revisit our strategic plan, and to have some really great conversations with the superintendent about how we're always advancing towards those goals. So in short, the Board of Ed and the superintendent have distinct roles and responsibilities. And this is, you know, as, as we get into it, we're always sort of learning more, we're navigating these things and understanding how to do each of our roles more effectively. So this is, this is from a couple of books here and. A school board's primary responsibility is to oversee the education of the students in its district. Individual board members work together in order to reach decisions that may have a lasting impact. These decisions are generally broad in scope and ideally the board will rarely have to delve into the district's day-to-day operations. The reporting of building level matters to the board will generally be, generally be left to the discretion of the superintendent. So a pretty concise statement here of our distinct roles. So to clarify, I know I, I assumed this and I think often members of our broader community assume this structure. But if we think about the role of the board in relationship to the superintendent, board members should view themselves outside of the district's chain of command rather than at its apex. Once the top of the chain, that is the superintendent, has been reached without some sort of resolution, board policy usually dictates that the individual can then bring the matter to the board, but more of as an appeal mechanism. Boards are encouraged to review the decision of the superintendent as to whether or not it followed existing policies and procedures in order to achieve an acceptable outcome, not substitute its own judgment for that of the superintendent. So when superintendent makes a decision and if there's, if there's a sort of friction between superintendent action and board policy, that's brought to us and that's where we provide our input and feedback. It's more of this, it's more of this. Superintendent oversees the day-to-day of the operations of the institution and we're an appeals body. Again, we set the policy, they go make it happen. And when policy comes up against some sort of challenge, we review that and say, keep going, revise it, whatever it might be, okay? And this is important for us to think about because it, it makes clear our unique and distinct responsibilities. Fortunately, understanding our unique responsibilities also means that we're able to focus on the most important work, increasing student achievement. And conversely, if, if, if we step out of line, people get confused, we, we don't understand where our lanes are, that can harm student achievement and it should go without saying, cost the district thousands of dollars. So there's lots of research on how to be effective, how to be effective. I'm not going to read this whole thing, but I will talk about here in the next couple of slides, some practices. Okay, so we know, there's research. We know too, as a group, we've been a highly effective and highly functioning board and we do these things. So eight traits of effective boards. One through four. We know that effective school boards commit to a vision of high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction and define clear goals towards that vision. So at the end of the day, we have to demand that our students learn, that our staff does all within their power to make sure that our students learn. That's why we're here, to hold high expectations for student achievement. We also have to have shared values and beliefs about what is possible for students and their ability to learn. We have to recognize that all students can learn and it's our job to make sure that we're helping each and every one of our students to learn. Effective boards spend less time on those operational issues and more time focused on policies that improve student achievement. Again, thinking about our distinct roles, the super and the administration oversee the day-to-day and we should really be at a 50,000 foot, talking about policies that help our students achieve their goals. Effective school boards have a collaborative relationship with our staff and community and establish strong communication structure to inform and engage both our internal and external stakeholders about what's going on in the district and how we're advancing towards those goals. We know too that effective boards are data savvy, they embrace, they monitor data even when that information is negative and we use it to drive continuous improvement. And we've been really good over these last couple of years of, of having our administrative colleagues bring us that data, having really focused conversations about that data and brainstorming and helping our administrative colleagues go and improve our student achievement. We know that effective school boards align and sustain resources such as professional development to meet district goals. We have a strategic plan, we need to make sure that the decisions we made, make are aligned with that strategic plan and our goals because those goals and strategic plan, well, they're gonna fail if they don't have the resources. We know that we have to lead as a united team with the superintendent, each from their respective roles with strong collaboration and mutual trust. So the relationship between the board and the superintendent should be one where we're collaborating, where we push each other to get better, and where we have frank and honest conversations about our goals and how best to get towards those goals. That trust piece is so, so important and we'll talk more about that here in a moment. We know that effective school boards, they take part in team development and training. Our touchpoints, our touchstones around the evaluation of our superintendent give us a chance to talk about goals. We know that we take our M A S B training, we know when we have M A S B come in to do our annual superintendent evaluation training, those are opportunities for us to talk, make clear our, our shared values, our goals as individuals and our shared goals as boards, as a, as a board. So that's how, those are some common practices for effective boards. Here's a little bit about how that works for us. So here's a little note about process and how things start and how we give feedback and how they actually take shape when they get to us on the board table. So what's the typical process for us? So the superintendent and their team, they have discussions about some issue that needs board approval. Again, these are aligned with our strategic areas. They develop some goals to help us realize those strategic areas and they say, hey, in order to increase student achievement, we really need X, Y, or Z. The superintendent will sometimes ask the board president to poll members of the board to better understand all perspectives. Hey, if we need to buy this school bus, there's this model of school bus, what do you think about this model of school bus? The, excuse me, the superintendent will also do the, that sort of outreach in our monthly or weekly check-ins. So again, the superintendent is taking that information, taking it back to their team, and the team is refining, learning more, giving the board more information if we need it. And we have, they answer questions. That part of that, that question and answer is essential to the process. So that proposal is refined. So the board president and/or the superintendent may ask individuals for more feedback. We, and I skipped a really important point here. When the administration, the superintendent have. Put together, that will come to us sometimes at a committee of the whole meeting if that needs in-depth discussion. Or oftentimes it will appear as an information item at our business meetings. So we have two moments in a more formal setting to talk about those proposals. And Elizabeth, Kim, I know we talked a little bit about this, but our first meeting of every month is our committee of the whole meeting where we're able to have those kind of in-depth conversations. Megan, the board president and the administration schedule those so we're able to really have a deep dive into those, those proposals or ideas. After those, those proposals are refined, we may have some more feedback. A final proposal is then brought forth for action at a regular business meeting, our second meeting of every month. The board votes, so then the administration gets to work making that happen. So a few things to keep in mind throughout this process. If a member asks for information related to any board resolution, policy, or, or goal within the strategic plan, if one member asks, we share, that, that response is then given to every board member so that everyone has equal access to that information and the shared information. Because again, we are a team of seven, a board of seven, and we need to have the same information so that we can help make these proposals as sharp as they can be. Throughout this process, we know confidentiality is so important. Breaking confidentiality not only violates the law, but it erodes trust. We get together to talk about these things and when we do, we would expect that what's, what happens in the boardroom or in closed session stays in those, those spaces. Throughout the process too, we always observe M A S B and the N A S B's best practices that board members amplify district comment without providing commentary, as it can muddy the waters, right? And part of our job as board members is to get together as a collective of seven to talk about these things. So it's good for us to amplify district content. Hey, we know we've got backyard battle on Friday, it's gonna be great, right? But avoiding that individual commentary. Members should never provide directives to district employees other than the superintendent. The superintendent is our employee, they are employee. The board speaks through its minutes and no individual speaks for the board. The president does act as the spokesperson, but the board speaks through its minutes. Those are our votes. So what is the board's stance? Look in the minutes. The president can serve as the spokesman to say, here's the board's stance. And this really helps to make sure that our messaging is clear around the board's actions. It also just helps to make sure that we're leading as a unified team. And I know this is hard, we have to be mindful of the superintendent's time and focus. We want them to not only, you know, do a good job in their relationship with the board, but we also want to make sure they've got time to do their job too, which is the good work of implementing district goals. So a couple of things to keep in mind here. In front of us, now, an important part of all of this too is the agenda. And that's in front of all of us. Our board policy spells out that our agendas, they guide our actions. And really importantly, they serve as the official records of our work. The agendas that we have in front of us are so important. They are our voice, they are what we choose to work on, they communicate with our broader public about what we're up to. So as you'll see in front of us, we've got a couple of things. We have our introductory items, we had a really great presentation, we do our pledge, we welcome people. We have our public comment on action items, so those are the items that we'll be voting on. We want to make sure that our broader community has a chance to offer their input and say on the things that we'll be voting on. So that's always done as our first public comment. We have our consent agenda, so these are our minutes, retirements, resignations. So these are the action, these are the items that we take action on, that we include in the consent agenda and consent to us passing them. We have our information items, we've got a couple of those. So again, those are opportunities for the administration to bring things to us. We can have some conversations to help them understand how best to implement these things and how they might work around the edges to make them all the more effective. We have our new business, so those will be things that we actually take our votes on. We have also our public comment on non-action items. So this is a really kind of forward-looking moment where members of the public can come and say, hey, this thing is going on, want to bring your attention to that, that item. Our public comment is never a time for Q and A because oftentimes we don't have the information to even respond. And because the superintendent is our primary representative, they need to hear that so that they can go to work, figure that out, and we are very diligent in, in collecting our public's information items so that the superintendent can follow up. This is a chance for the public come tell us, and then we tell the superintendent, go fix this. We have our board reports. And board reports are a chance for each one of us as a board member to talk in a relatively narrow way about our committee work. So tonight we'll be joining our new committees. So this is a chance for us to give updates on, hey, I'm on the Drayton Plains Nature Center Committee, here's what's going on. This is also a chance for us to talk about any public, excuse me, professional development we may have done. So if you've taken your CBA classes, that's a great thing to come share and to talk about here. Because again, our community is interested in our professional development, the things we're talking, learning about, best practices. We often talk to, we want to amplify district content, so always around the holiday season, we make sure to get out all of the information around our holiday concerts, football games. So that's a chance again to amplify some of those really important goings-ons in the district. This isn't a chance, the board reports, we don't want to, we want to make sure that we don't hedge towards deliberating, that we don't offer commentary on things that we're doing, that we're taking up, or possibly will deliberate on. So that board report is, is narrow in scope and for good reason, right? Because we don't want to be deliberating in moments where we shouldn't. And then we always end, of course, with the superintendent's report. And similarly narrow in focus, they, they get to tell our broader community about the things that are going on and, and provide reminders to our broader community about important events they should be going to. We know we follow Robert's Rules up there, couple, you know, we're doing a quick, quick little primer here. As we deliberate, when we, when we're at our board table, we want to make sure to ask to be recognized by the board president. That just gives the president a chance to really be an effective facilitator. When we are deliberating, it's important to remember that we always address ideas, not people. You know, so, you know, member Wagner says something outlandish and crazy, you know, I'm going to address not member Wagner, but the idea or the proposal that member Wagner might be putting forward. Okay, so we address ideas, we don't address people. The president works to recognize speakers in an alternating fashion. So through discussion, we know where people end up standing on an issue and the president should work to provide opportunities for alternate, alternating views so that we actually can work towards a consensus or some revision. We don't interrupt. Ideally, member comments, again, according to Robert's Rules, the president has some discretion around this issue, but according to Robert's Rules, member comments should be limited to two rounds. According to Robert's Rules, previous decisions are not admissible when deliberating because we are to take every resolution on its own merits. And finally, the president is our spokesperson. These are, that one is not only codified in Robert's Rules, but also in our own board policy. So the president is, is, you know, serves as our spokesperson, is often works with our comm department to issue statements on behalf of the board. Okay, so where are we at? We know that through this process, there are plenty of opportunities to listen, to ask question, and to gain answers. That's why we're here, in order to make the best decisions, we gotta have the best information. This process gives us, board members and the administration, an opportunity to collaborate and build trust. It allows the board to stay focused on its mission and role and to recognize the expertise of the district's staff and leadership. of the district staff and leadership. We've got such a talented community here, and we should rely on that expertise. The process also tells us, there's no surprises when it comes to voting, because at the end of the day, if we follow the process, we're faithful to that process, when that comes in front of us, we should be well familiar with it, and it should be a seven oh vote. And a seven oh vote is really a report card. It should be a symptom of a good, of a good illness, one that says that we're working together, we're working together. There are no soapboxes, monologues, because that process facilitates consensus, and at the end of the day, student achievement remains the focus. We represent our community by creating the conditions for a thriving school district and behaving in ways that honor the work of our staff and students. After all, that's what our community wants. And I won't go through all of this, but those best practices, well, they can increase student achievement. That focus, that's, that connection is explicit, it's documented. The evidence presented suggests public governing boards can improve their organization's performance by focusing on strategic planning, openness and accountability with, and between board members, partnership with the government executive, honesty, community input, board development, and member stability. In short, boards have had set the tone and create the conditions for gainful and rewarding work, robust and meaningful learning, and lasting and community pride. This is a team that's been committed to decorum, respect, and student achievement. This is after all, and at the end of the day, about problem solving, not partisanship. And I'll end it here. You know, I've used this quote before, but a leader is anyone who takes responsibility for finding the potential in people and processes, and who has the courage to develop that potential. So that's the work of a board, and that's your new orientation. Congratulations. Before I jump back up there and we move on, Kim, Elizabeth, do we have any questions that your colleagues can help answer?
Not right now.
Not at this time.
I'm good for right now.
You're good? Then we've done it, we've done it.
Couldn't have done that with just them?
Patricia, I know you. All right. Let's now move on to our organization items. Excuse me, our election of officers. Colleagues, we're now gonna accept nominations for the office of the president. What nominations are the Member Donahue?
Nominate President Wagner as our president.
You? Other nominations? Okay, excellent. All those in favor of Member Wagner serving in the president's role, please raise your hand.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
I'm gonna give this to you. You are up.
All right.
You are up.
Nothing, nothing, thank you, nothing like taking, I have big shoes to fill. Member Ristich has been our president for many years, and he has set a precedent that I will do my best to follow. All right, so. Where are we at?
We will now accept nominations for the office of vice president. Member Patricia?
I'd like to nominate Member Torres.
Do we have any other nominations? All right, all those in favor of Member Torres for vice president, please signify by raising your hand. All right, oh yeah, like, yeah. Just like John Paul. All right, congratulations, Member Torres, seven oh. All right, let's move on to the next page. We will now accept nominations for the office of secretary. I would like to nominate Member Ristich. Are there any other nominations? All right, all those in favor of Member Ristich for secretary, please signify by raising your hand. All right, seven oh. And now he immediately takes over, so John Paul, do you have any pages you wanna give to him? All right, we will now accept nominations for the office of treasurer.
I will nominate Mr. Pat Donahue.
Do we have any other nominations? All right, all those in favor of Member Donahue for treasurer, please signify by raising your hand. All right, seven oh. All right, moving on, so our next business would be the Board of Education appointments. So the board is seeking appointments to various committees as listed in the packet. Oakland Schools, the previous representation was representative was Member Sutherland with Member Wagner serving as alternate. I would be, I would be happy to be now the representative since Member Sutherland is no longer with our Board of Education. Is there anyone that would like to be the alternate for the O C S B A? The Oakland County School, sorry, probably should've said that, the Oakland County School Board Association meetings.
I would like to.
Member McGregor, is there anyone else that would like to be an alternate? All right, so I will be the representative with Member McGregor being the alternate. Moving on, our next one would be the Oakland County School Boards Association Government Relations Committee. I was the previous representative, and Member Torres was the alternate. I would be happy, Member Torres, if you would like to be the representative, I can step out of that role.
Yeah, I would like to do that.
Okay, and who would like to be the alternate for the Government Relations Committee? I would be happy to be the alternate if there isn't anyone else that would like to be the alternate? And be the, be alternate, okay. So we will have Member Torres as the representative and McGregor as the alternate. There's the Hess Hathaway Advisory Board, the previous representative is John Hemmelspa with Member Patricia serving as alternate. Are we happy as a board to keep Mr. Hemmelspa in that role? And, you know, Member Patricia, do you wanna stay as the alternate?
I would like to stay as alternate, but again, it's... Have we talked to John, find out, I mean?
But I, um...
Yeah, yes.
Member Hemmelspa, he did, he did reach out and said that he's obviously good with whatever the board wants to do. So he is, he is in the know.
Okay, well...
I would like to see a, a member of the board. Again, it's, John took, that's, these, as Pat had pointed out earlier this week, these things are time-consuming, they seem like they're kind of nothing, but this is part of our community, this is part of what we do, it's part of what gets us involved. It's a pain in the butt sometimes, I've been part of all these committees, but I, I really think it is important that we actually have a board member. The Hess Hathaway is something that, especially if you, if you have a younger kid or something, because you're working on the farm, when they have the sheep shearing and all the different events going on, as a board member, you're usually there helping to volunteer.
I would, I would be interested in serving.
Okay. All right, and Member Patricia, would you like to stay as the alternate?
Unless someone else wants to.
Does anyone else wanna be the alternate for Hess Hathaway? All right, we will have. Yeah, Patricia, as the alternate. All right, Waterford Youth Assistant, the previous representative was Member Jocelyn, who's no longer with our Board of Education, with Member Sutherland as the alternate, who is also no longer with the Board of Education. So is there another member interested in becoming the representative of the Waterford Youth Assistant? Member Sonnycrant? All right. And who would like to be the alternate for Waterford Youth Assistant? Don't all raise your hands at once.
I, I can't.
Okay, thank you, Member Patricia. Head Start Policy Committee, the previous representative was Member Sutherland with Members Wagner and Ristich as alternates. With Member Sutherland no longer being part of the Board of Education, I would be happy to be, step from being an alternate to be the representative. Member Ristich, would you like to remain as the alternate?
Yeah.
All right, so we've got that one covered.
And on that Head Start Committee, I think you can only do it for five years.
Yes.
So it's something, it's through the day. It's an afternoon.
Friday afternoons usually, isn't it?
I couldn't remember Friday.
Okay.
I enjoyed that one a lot, 'cause they fed me. But I timed, I timed myself over or something, so.
We next up have the Drayton Plains Nature Center, the previous representative was Member Donahue with Members Torres and Ristich serving as alternates. Would you like to remain in that role?
Sure, I'll do that.
Okay, and do you two wanna remain as the alternates? Same, okay. Same. All right, well, thank you to all of the members for representing this board and further serving our community through these appointments.
Did, did we miss one? The Waterford Township Recreation?
Oh, where'd that one go?
Right there, the third one.
The third one?
I think we missed that one.
Ironically, it's not on my page. So, the Waterford Recreation Department, I believe, Member Patricia was the representative. Would you like to remain as that?
Yes.
Okay, and who would like to be the alternate?
I, I was the alternate, I'll do that again.
All right, thank you. All right, so now, thank you to everyone for serving on your, on your prospective committees, it's very much appreciated. So next up is the Board of Education Operating Norms. So I move that the Board of Education reaffirm the operating norms previously adopted by the Board of Education. All right, the motion has been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? Would you like me to read those norms, or do you all feel confident, do you want me to read them out loud?
Yeah, just for the sake of the public, we should read them out.
I would be more than happy to do that, I just have to find them. Hold on. All right, here we go. Are you ready? It is recommended that the Board of Education reaffirm the following operating norms previously adopted by the board. We will speak with one voice once decisions are made. Serve as the community's eyes and ears and communicate information that may not be well-known to the administration in the form of a non-directive heads-up. Be visible in the community, ask questions, be willing to learn, be prepared. Govern in an atmosphere that encourages and respects free expressions of opinions and ideas, whether in the minority or majority. Not surprise one another. Admit what we don't know. Keep our minds open to change. Remain responsible to all students and members of the community. Communicate openly, honestly, and constructively. Maintain confidentiality. Model civility. Demonstrate a clear distinction between the roles of the board and the administration. Speak as one voice, not as individuals, when giving direction to the superintendent. As individuals, not direct actions or request information that requires significant amounts of additional work or time from the superintendent or staff. Actively listen to complaints or concerns regarding district activities, and then advise the individual on how best to proceed. Communicate officially with the staff through the superintendent as much as possible. Delegate to the superintendent responsibility for all administrative functions, except those specifically reserved to the board through board policy. I believe the motion had been supported. Are there any, now, are there any questions or concerns? All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries, seven zero. All right, the 2025-2026 Board of Education meeting schedule. I move that the Board of Education regular meetings and Committee of the Whole meetings for the 2025-2026 school year be scheduled per the listed provided at 6:30 P M. Regular meetings are held at the Waterford Township Hall Auditorium, 5200 Civic Center Drive, Waterford, Michigan, unless posted otherwise. Committee of the Whole meetings are held at the Kersman Administrative, Administration Services, Crary Campus, 501 North Cath Lake Road, Waterford, Michigan, unless posted otherwise. Do you so move? All right, yay. All right, the motion has been moved and supported. Are there any comments or comments? Are we good with the schedule, everybody? Did you get a chance to look at the calendar? Okay. All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, motion carries, seven zero. Consent agenda. Are there any, unless our objections, the consent agenda is approved as presented. Are we all good with tonight's consent agenda? All right. Information items, so next up is Assistant Superintendent Elka. She's going to fill us in on the T5 P A systems. Sounds super exciting. Oh, and I see that we also have Mr. Jim Beaver, and, and we have Elizabeth Cucci as well.
Thank you very much for having us to, to bring you some information about the new P A system, or public address system, that we are proposing that the board approve at the next regular board meeting. I'm gonna have Elizabeth Cucci and Jim Beaver provide the information that we, we collaborated on with the people in the district and through Paul Twig, who is our technology advisor from Barton Mallow, and they're gonna go through the process and what we have found.
Thanks, Andy. Good evening, board. I'm gonna kick it off here with the, uh, presentation. We're here tonight, information, to present information about the, the P A system project that we've engaged in. As we continue to review our security assessment that we conducted in 2022, our ability to communicate with staff is critically important. As our P A systems is our primary form of alert, we are, we engage in a process to review our systems. So before I turn it over to Elizabeth, I'm just gonna give you a little bit of history of the process that we engaged in. In February twenty four, of 24, we surveyed all of our schools to determine what method they use to communicate with classrooms. And primarily, you know, we wanted to know, are you using P A system, are you using the phones? There's options in both, and we wanted to get a sense of what folks were using. And in May of 24, we created a, a committee of diverse stakeholders to develop system needs and, and, and implement, implementation priorities. The committee included administration, principals, teachers, maintenance staff, and technology staff. Paul Twig, as mentioned, from Barton Mallow, was also there as a, a technical consultant for us. From that committee, we had a subcommittee that reviewed what systems and features are available out, out there in the, the tech world. The group participated in a, in a demo highlighting features of different types of systems so we could get a sense of what options might be available for us to consider. A follow-up meeting with the large committee occurred after that, where we presented our findings, the, the subcommittee findings, and we, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, the committee knew what features were available, that, that were beneficial for the buildings. And it was determined that a survey was going to occur at each school over the summer. So essentially, Paul Twig went ahead and visited every single school and walked the entire building to find out where all the speaker locations were, what each individual had, uh, school had for features in their P A systems. He documented all that so he could bring it back to the committee for us to review, and to help start to, to build our bid document. In the fall, individual meetings were then scheduled with every single building to sit down and talk with the building administrator, to talk about the survey that occurred over the summer, to make sure we're all on the same page, and to get more feedback from them to, to determine if there were any concerns that they had about the P A system, and, and to review speaker locations and see if there are any additional things that we missed or that we might not know. And then in October, a, a small committee did a site visit at Bloomfield Hills Middle School to, to thoroughly review a newer system, see how it works in, in the real world. And then finally, a bid specification was developed calling for an I P system, which Elizabeth will talk a little bit here in a second. But, you know, an I P system would tie into our network and allow for much more flexibility for the building, and potentially district-wide communication if we decide to go there with it. It also has the ability to add-on features in the future, and serves to offer a solution with a speaker and a display, which will help us display clocks, so we can have accurate clocks throughout the buildings, and strobe features. And, and I mention that because I think, as I've mentioned to the, to the board, there is pending legislation out there for more stringent, uh, alert requirements, especially as it pertains to color coding and alert messages. So going to an I P system, you know, is, is going to put us in a position where if that does become law, we will, we will be in compliance with that. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Elizabeth.
Good evening, everybody. So as Jim shared, the I P address system essentially is an internet protocol. So we talked about an I P address system when we adopted our new phone systems last year as well, so it'll integrate with that as part of this component. One thing that we did when we brought the committee together and Paul went building to building to look at what we have, what works, what's not, what areas need a speaker, and then we went back to each building, as Jim shared, this fall, to talk with principals to figure out how that would look and what they needed. Our first thing is... Our first thing is, we looked at our current state of our current PA systems. We know right now, the ones on the left-hand side have a system that is no longer supported and/or manufactured. The ones on the right, we put out to bid as alternate buildings because systematically, our hope, next Board meeting, is to bring forward a proposal to have all buildings updated. The reason for that, such as like Jim just pointed out, is that, one, we would be all on the same page, but then we would also have the same secure, safety and security features that we would be implementing in the buildings that no longer are supported. So just to share another tidbit to that is, when you look at the buildings on the right under the alternate buildings, Cooley, Grayson, Schoolcraft, and Mason currently have what we call a traditional analog system, which is a little bit of an older system. It's not an IP address system, which means it doesn't have those security features. Beaumont and Havland are on a completely different system, different manufacturers. So as you can see, we kind of have different systems throughout the whole district. And you know, one thing we've been really working far on with, actually from the tech side, is kind of a streamline of ensuring all buildings are on the same platforms for a variety of reasons. This is, pictures essentially of a traditional analog PA system. The lines are showing you how they go from a speaker system. There is those, you might remember these when you were students, the call button on the wall where you would push. Yes, we do still have some of those. And then that would ring down to the office, and then someone else would have to get the phone. So it's kind of this game of telephone. The PAs, as you can see, are in different spots, and as you can see, we have our digital clocks there, not digital, regular. So this is the difference. So an IP network-based system obviously runs on our network. It is a technology-based system. It runs from your phone, it'll run from a computer. Our new phone system that we adopted last year, we put into the bid specs that it was a requirement, that whatever IP system we go with will be able to integrate with our current phone system. We wanted to ensure that was a streamlined system. And then, as you can see, all the speakers kind of feed off each other. So these are kind of those security features that Jim was talking about. One thing that this will allow us to do is to do programmed targeted communications. What I mean by that is, if I'm in a building, we essentially can make hallways into what we call zones. So say we know something's happening in Zone 1, we can make an announcement just to Zone 1. We can make an announcement to the whole building. From a district level, we'll be able to make an announcement to all buildings if we needed to. We don't, obviously, without an IP system, that's not something we have right now. It also, as Jim shared, will allow us to have digital clocks, strobe lights, which is quite important, especially if that legislation does go through, and then emergency alerts. So as you can see, it's hard to see, but there's different colors. These IP-based locks and speaker systems allow us to put a message out in a color-coded system. So we know, and we've looked at a couple of things Jim showed me the other day, that are adopting some color systems from even purple, yellow, red, and if, if we looked at that, we'd be able to adopt that within our system so that the message would come out in those colors and that our students would get to know what those colors mean as well. So again, it's looking at a PA system, but also looking at it from the safety and security lens, what can we do? We know our PAs need to be replaced, but we also know these features are probably going to be coming down the road, so that's why we took this committee and saw how we can marry the two together. So here's our next steps. So today, this morning, bid opened at 11 o'clock. You do have the bid tabs that are fresh off the printer, that's why you just got them today. T5 information is coming to you right now. On January 28th, we are going to be having an onsite review. So we looked at the committee and we decided we are going to run this pretty very similar to what we did with our interactive display boards. So based on today's bid, Burton Mallow has worked and contacted the vendors, and they're going to be coming in on the 28th with the product to show us what it looks like, what the features are, along with everyone from the committee, and we're inviting principals who wish to attend. But on top of that, we also know, always, kind of attending in person is always tricky because that's a kind of a whole-day event. So Jane's going to be videoing, just like she did with the interactive displays. So we'll be able to share that with you, we'll be able to share that with all of our stakeholders. And then we'll have a survey open from January 30th till February 7th for people to put in input as they wish. So that's a choice thing, but then providing that input, then the committee will come back together, look at that, and then on February 20th, we will bring our recommendation to you on what we wish to go with. Then, the hope would be, if something was approved by summer of 2025, which is this summer, installation work would begin. Our targeted buildings will be those buildings on the left, the ones that have the not-supported right now, and then we would add our alternate buildings to the end of the project. Any questions for Jimmy or Sandy?
Does anyone have any questions? Member Patricia?
I hate to ask you, but I don't see Stepansky on there.
Stepansky is not on there because they, since their building is brand-new, they have an upgraded system.
That's what I was hoping. Sorry, I didn't already have. Okay.
Member Torres?
So the analog systems, because I remember those from way back when, so how long did those last? I mean, we're talking decades, right?
A little bit longer than they should have. What we're noticing is, we have some who have been around for a while and they're slowly, they're still working, but we're slowly having things that it's taking us a while to figure out how to fix.
And so the digitals, so there's so much intricacy involved with those, so I'm thinking about anything digital. A lot of times has a lifespan of only three or four years, like I think of like an iPhone or something. So how does that work? Is there like capacity for upgrade, considering that this is digital?
Yep. Yep, so there's a capacity for upgrade. There also, since it's a server-based system, we can add additional servers if we needed to. Surprisingly, they last roughly about 10 to 12. It depends. I mean, obviously, you know, there's cases where they don't. We do, in the bid, have a five-year warranty, though. So we have that built into the bid as well. But again, it is tech, and we know tech in 10 to 12 years is going to look completely different, right? It's going to look different in five years from now. So we know and recognize that, but like we shared, the safety and security pieces that could be added to this, it opens a world for us that we don't have.
So will, will the, these systems, you know, the ones that we need to replace immediately and then the secondary, so will they work in collaboration with what we have at Stepansky? Or will it be?
It'll be a little bit different. So Stepansky's is a different bit of a plan because it's a different type of a building, but it will be different.
So then, would all these, all the systems in the schools, then, would they be able to kind of like talk to each other, or how does that work?
From a central office or a programming standpoint, yes. Are we going to give a building that ability? Probably not so much.
Yeah, but the central, okay.
But is, is the capability there? Yes.
Thank you.
All right, member Donahue?
A statement and then a question. The IP, these network-based systems are awesome. We installed ours in about a year and a half ago, and the ability to make contact, individual classrooms, individual hallways, the red and green lights. We actually had a demonstration this summer where there was, we called it, it was a drill during a lockdown situation and in one part of my building, but then they had the green lights go on and to lead the kids and staff out of the other part, and it was just follow the green lights. And so one part of the building was still red and then the other part was green, so it was a really cool setup. So yeah, so that's awesome. It's great. I'm glad to see we're going to this. Now for the question, I, I'm, why are we, why are we doing just the ones on the left and, and holding off on the alternate buildings? I know, I'm sure I missed it.
No, you're fine. So we're not holding off on the alternates. What we did was, because we didn't know where the pricing was going to come in. So within the bid itself, what you'll see is, we put the buildings that have to be done, and then we put the ones as alternates. But when we come for recommendation, we are going to be recommending that we do all of them.
Understood. Thank you.
Member McRaker, did you have a question?
Yes. So I love, actually, the idea of going to this because there's a lot of features that are important, and especially for kids with special needs. That's great. One of the things that's really important with Internet of Things, security. How is that going? Like, do we need to get additional stuff? Is that all included?
So pieces of that are included, and as a new member to the Board, I'll share with you, last year, we had a pretty extensive cybersecurity audit, which we passed with flying colors. So we really are not worried about that from our standpoint. Does it mean, from my department's end, that we'll have a lot more work to do? Yeah, it sure does. But we're willing to take that on because we know that's what's right for our buildings. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Member Ristich?
So to build off both of it, member Torres and member Donahue, so what sort of, understanding the intricacies of this, as well as the importance for the safety and security of our buildings, I imagine this will all be accompanied with some sort of professional learning. What's, what's the scope of that?
So the scope of that is a little bit different, and it's going to probably roll kind of like the Promethean, based on install. So when your building is installed, we would come and train on, within that plan. So it's not going to be, everybody's trained at the same time, right? It's going to be a rolling training based on as install, but from our perspective at a district lens, we're going to be professional learning all the way through this, right? Because we also know, just because we set up this way for emergency, we may need to tweak it, we may need to look at this. So we're going to be doing that all along the way.
Who, who would receive that, that PD? Because this is located in central office of every building.
Yeah, so it'll definitely be, and Jim can jump in from his perspective, but I know it'll definitely be the office staff, the principals, will probably have the teachers to appoint, and then some key teachers within their BERT teams would be trained on there. Obviously, Jim's teams will be trained, my teams would be trained, central office would be trained. I can't think of.
No, it's really going to involve all different levels of training. Obviously, the office staff are going to have more intense training with the, you know, the head end of the system. But, you know, we expect that the features that are offered in the systems, you know, there is going to be some, some classroom training to go along, so our teaching staff knows how to use the system. And yeah, it's, it's really going to touch pretty much everybody because, you know, as we all know, when, when something goes down, you know, communication is critical. So we want to make sure everybody's on board.
Yep. Last question. Member Torres asked about, so that, what we approve here, if we approve this, it will be integrated with Stepansky, so these systems will be seamlessly integrated? Because I heard the district-wide communication, so if there...
We'll have to work on that.
Sure.
We'll have to work with the vendor to see how we pull that in, but that is, I wrote myself a little note to, to make sure that that happens.
All right, do we have any other questions? Well, as always, thank you so much for bringing the information to us and always making sure safety and security is top of mind. I so appreciate that, and I think it's huge that we're, we're being very proactive in this and not waiting until it goes into law. So thank you.
We're excited to bring this to you. Really hope.
I'm excited for the digital clocks. All right, so next up, we have our elementary playgrounds with Assistant Superintendent Elka.
Thank you very much.
And Carla.
Yes, Carla Ramirez is coming up to help me if there's any questions I can't answer. I do want to thank Jim and Elizabeth for their work with the PA system. It was a lot of work. They took it on, they ran with it, and it's not something we had planned on doing, but we're really excited about the opportunity that we'll have working PA systems everywhere we want them to be, not just in a lot of the central areas, but also to have working clocks. That was very exciting. And then some of the security features that we've been talking about ever since the SEC came through and did our, our, our assessment, you know, these were things that we, we wanted to have, such as the strobes, and be able to get some of those in one system is pretty exciting for all of us. So thank you very much. So tonight, I'm bringing an info item for elementary playground improvements. So as part of the 2020 bond that was approved by our voters, we made, included upgrades to the elementary playgrounds. So we brought that up from really Series 3 to Series 1 slash Series 2, because what we were finding during our inspections, that we do annually, but we also do on a regular basis with our custodians, that a lot of the equipment we had, we were having to actually remove. So we were reducing the amount of equipment that the students had to play on, on a regular basis. So we started moving it up. As part of the process, we had our architect bring in a actual playground designer to work with all of our buildings. So they worked with the buildings and the principals to develop plans of how they wanted equipment, how they wanted layouts. And a couple of things that came out of it was just being able to have mulch instead of pea gravel, which I know, it's an oldie, a goodie, but there was just too many issues with the pea gravel. It was not staying in the areas with the equipment. It was really a hazard to the adults as well as the students, so that was something. But they also wanted walking tracks. So we were able to include that as part of the design. So there are some playgrounds that did have them, there are some that did not have them. So we made sure that that was just part of the design so that the students, as well as I know the staff during lunchtime, also enjoy that, being able to walk around the playgrounds and get that exercise in, but also to include equipment. So the information that we gave was the playground, one of the blueprints that we had, as well as equipment. So we have worked with them as to the equipment, so in some places, we have new equipment, such as there's certain pieces of equipment that the students just didn't like using anymore, and I'm not going to use the right words, I know what they look like, but I don't know what they're called. And they had other equipment that they, they were able to look at and decide that was really something that the kids would enjoy more. And so that was very successful last year when we did our first round. We had to split them because there was no way we could do nine elementaries. Actually, this summer's going to be fun because we're going to, we're recommending five elementaries to be done, but last year, we did four, and the feedback that we've gotten from staff and students and parents has been fantastic. They love it. I know we'll give some pictures in the next month, we'll have some before and after pictures from last year, but I think the one that impresses me most is Grayson, because it was, it felt like a field before. Now it feels like a really comprehensive playground with the walkways and everything, a little bit more grass. It's just, it feels like a more interactive thing than we've had in the past. So that's what we're going to continue on with that. One of the extra things that I did include is, last year, what we had done a lot of with all of these plans was looking at what we could either keep or move, and we did inspections on anything that was kept, any of the older equipment, and with the idea is we would repair it. What we found is, the cost of repairs for some of these was just so much that it didn't make sense to, to repair them, it made more sense to replace them. So we have three buildings that we did last year that we're going to replace, a couple more pieces of equipment, so that they'll have more new equipment and more of the equipment on the playground will be, have the same life. So we expect that this equipment will last about 20 years. Not to say that we're not going to have failures before then, but we'll, we'll, the idea is to last for 20 years. So that is the information that I gave you was the plan. We have been working with the principals, there's a few that, few things that changed. So we might have another year of a couple of changes. One of the changes that came around this last year that didn't affect last year's projects but does affect this year's, is if the project affects a area of over, I think it was an acre, then we had to have an environmental site plan, we had to do a lot of extra things. So since it only really affected the walking track, we reduced the walking track for a couple of schools, and then in the future, we will look at expanding it as a separate project, which, because they're separate projects, doesn't hit that limit. So that was a little bit of a disappointment, but we worked with the principals that it affected, and we're just keeping that as a item that we'll do in the future. Nothing we're doing now will prevent that and, or keep it from, you know, we're not doing more work by moving it out one more year.
Are there any questions? Member Torres?
With the playground equipment, with the old equipment, I know we can't repurpose that, right, for liability issues?
Correct.
So what happens to that equipment?
It's usually, because a lot of that's metal, it'll get salvaged. If it's plastic, it'll just get thrown away.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Member Ristich? Oh, I didn't see member Patricia. Go ahead, member.
It's expensive. It's expensive last time.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was. It was expensive as it was last time.
Talking millions of dollars for.
Yes.
Build a little hill. They run from down the hill. Oh, it's expensive. They love that. A little trackhead, little, it just seemed, I mean, the site work plus the expensive equipment. And again, I'm concerned because this is all for our elementary schools and we, I'd like to review the status, the future. I hate to, again, putting PA systems in, in, you know, spend a couple million dollars on a building that could close in five years if the, if our student population doesn't come out. It just terrifies me. It seems like a true waste of money.
And I understand where you're coming from, and we have talked about this the last couple of years, but since we have not made a decision, and we will probably not make it for a few more years, we had to look at where we're looking at, short and long-term, and we believe, and like I said, I'm not putting anything in your mouths, but I'm thinking, you're probably talking a good five years that these students will have these playgrounds to use, and if we don't... it for a few more years, we had to look at where we're looking at short and long term. And we believe, and like I said, I'm not putting anything in your mouths, but I'm thinking you're probably talking a good five years that these students will have these playgrounds to use. And if we don't, we have done a lot of things in between. We've gotten more soccer goals for them. We've gotten some other things that will help them. But we felt that we needed to move forward at this. And of course, the board has the opportunity to say if they do not want all the buildings to get the new playgrounds. But we did move forward with giving the board the option to look at it.
I hope that we want to look at that. And again, they have pea gravel. They can throw it. We're working there on, right, it's, it's fun stuff.
All right, member Ristich.
You might have said this, so forgive me. What is the material of the walking track?
So the walking tracks are actually concrete, right? The ones that, that's why I remember Grayson, some of our existing ones had asphalt depending where they were, but the new ones had cement.
Right. There's a variation between concrete and asphalt, but yeah, at each school.
Do you know how long are they?
They're all different, but we can definitely give you guys a layout with the, yeah, at a word, because we do have a design layout.
Yeah, it is, I didn't show you that because I wanted to really focus on where the equipment was going to go. A lot of times, it will go around the playground or in some places, like go around the edge of the whole area. So like Knudson, you know, they have that play area that's to the west of the building. The idea is that the walking goes all the way around that fenced area.
All right. Any other questions? Oh, member Torres.
How long does the playground equipment last? How many years?
We're anticipating about 20 years.
Okay.
Yeah.
That felt like the playground equipment we have now has been there a long time.
Yes, it has been about 20 years. And that's with us continuing to do all the annual inspections. And like I said, our custodians are regularly expecting, are inspecting them as well. We expect, obviously, you're going to have to do small adjustments in the way, but the idea is they should be lasting for 20 years.
And as a, as a parent of an elementary school student, I can tell you that my daughter looks forward to playground time. I mean, it really is a nice break from the academics and all of that for the kids. So it's really cool to see all the innovations and the different kinds of list of things that are available. So I think there was even a deeper appreciation during the pandemic, when you had to be outside and all those kinds of things. But yeah, 20 years, I mean, it's pretty good longevity. So, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate, oh, I didn't see, I didn't see your hand.
No, I just... Member McGregor. Do we have AstroTurf on any of these projects?
No, no, it's natural grass.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you again. Thank you, Carla, for coming and answering our questions. Thank you, Ms. Elka. Moving on to new business, Secretary Ristich, you are up.
Well, I have, moving on to new business, secretary. Yeah, sorry. Do we have, do we have it for...
No.
Okay, but do we?
I'll find it.
Okay.
Find it.
You have to forgive him. It's a new position for him, so he's trying to figure it out. He has to do something.
We can sting to fill the time.
Got it.
Okay.
Recommendation 402425, food service contract with Waterford Township Senior Center. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the proposed food service contract with Waterford Township and authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations to sign on the board's behalf. And I so move. Support.
All right. The motion has been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, motion carries seven oh. And now we are on to Treasurer Donahue for consideration of certain purchases.
Superintendent's recommendation 41-24-25, district-wide controls bid. It is recommended that the board approve the district controls bid to Metro Controls Incorporated in the amount of $283,980. Funds for this award are included in the 2020 bond. I so move.
Support.
All right. The motion has been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions?
Just, I want to thank our community. Again, another really important project that is made possible thanks to the 2020 bond.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And the motion passes seven zero. And still with our lovely Treasurer Donahue, the masonry model.
All right. Superintendent's recommendation 42-24-25, Waterford Mason Middle School remodel. It is recommended that the board approve the Waterford Mason Middle School bid to the bidders in amount listed below for a total award of $710,460.72. Funds for this project are included in the 2020 bond. I so move.
Support.
All right. The motion has been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions?
Just really quick for our listening audience, we're talking new bleachers, track service, excuse me, surface, electrical. I mean, it's pretty really exciting and really substantial revision, remodel.
And again, we want to thank our community because these are much-needed upgrades that we needed at our, our middle school athletic areas. So again, thank you as always for supporting our bonds. All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And the motion carries seven zero. And we are on to our Pierce remodel and field replacement with Treasurer Donahue.
Superintendent's recommendation 43-24-25, Waterford Pierce Middle School remodel and field replacement. It is recommended that the board approve the Waterford Pierce Middle School bid to the bidders in amounts listed below for a total of $3,260,781.59. Funds for this project are included in the 2020 bond. I so move.
Support.
All right. The motion has been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions regarding the Pierce remodel and field replacement? Member Patricia?
The turf field. Shaw, have we used them before? Is that who did, redid motts?
That is not, did with motts, but they've been in business for well over 20 years.
Yeah, I think we used AstroTurf. That's who I think we used originally. And when we originally did the fields, we had gotten prices from someone else that was cheaper, but we didn't use them, so.
Carla, could, I'm so sorry, Rob, I mean, interrupt. Could you use the microphone? They can't hear you in the back. They were just signaling to us. Thank you.
Okay, no, I was just saying, you're correct. AstroTurf is, was used...
We've used in the past, but we're using the one that's cheaper. And it's basically all carpets carpet.
Yes, and Shaw is reputable also. They've been, yes, they've been in business a while.
Thank you.
Member McGregor?
So I know, I just want to kind of say this as a comment, not so much as a question. I know people are concerned about AstroTurf. There were some comments there. And I know I asked some questions and I appreciate the feedback that I got. And I do want to let people know that my understanding is that this was written into the bond specifically, where we would be approving AstroTurf. So this is specifically what was approved by the voters in the bond language. So I just want to make sure people are aware of that because that's not something that we can necessarily change at this point. But I know people are concerned about it. So that's kind of where we are right now. So.
So yes, based on questions we got from the board, we put together information from athletic director, our prior director of maintenance and operations who had been here for 40 years. And that was part of their recommendation, simply because basically it went down to if we had it as a single sport event, we could manage a grass field. But because we start the field in March and we use it all the way through fall, and we use it for so many sports, we use it for classrooms, we use it for PE, lunch, everything, we never had an opportunity to really build in that grass surface and to keep it flat and to keep it from bogging down and having spare spots. So that was really their recommendation. They felt, based on our current usage, that this would be a better answer for that field. And so that was just, that was based on their years of being here and seeing how we use it. So, you know, and like I said, we have it at high school. We have a little bit of an experience with it. So that also gives us a lot of confidence that this field will hold up for what we need it for. So thank you.
Thank you.
Member Patricia?
One more comment, because again, there is a concern of, you know, natural grass or the turf, when we put the turf in at the high schools, because we can use it all day and all night. It makes it useful. It isn't, okay, the football team gets to practice today, the marching band gets to use it tomorrow, and nobody can use it for the next three days. This is something, when we rent it out to the little football team.
Corsairs.
Thank you. The corsairs, they get a chance to use it. And it looks cool. Again, I personally don't like it. I like the natural grass. When my son played lacrosse on it, the natural grass and kids coming in from the other schools that had their turf fields and go to play with the grass, they're coming up with, you know, wads of dirt and stuff. And it was just, it was a lot of fun. It's, you know, and they, you know, you fall down, you get dirty. It's, it's nice that part. But the turf field is so much easier to maintain. And our staff has done a great job at keeping that field looking beautiful. But it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of effort. And this is going to be a lot less time, a lot less effort, and we can use it a lot more. So it's, you know, it's a weight thing. You just move forward, make decisions, and I think it's the right decision.
Thank you.
And I would like to say thank you because I know quite a few of us had questions and had reached out, and the clarification was very much appreciated. And thank you so much for making sure we had the right information because our community is asking. So we need to be, we need to have that information so that we're able to share that with our community as they do ask.
And I appreciated being able to share that with you because the conversation had been a couple of years ago with John. So I couldn't remember. I just remember he convinced me it made sense because I'm like you. I think natural grass is a much better surface. But again, if you have one sport that you're using it for, it is, you can make it work and you can make it good. But we like to use our facilities. So this worked out as a better alternative.
No, we appreciate it very much. Thank you so much. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And the motion carries seven zero. All right. We will now take public comments on non-action items. I don't believe we have any green cards. We have a lot of green stuff up here, but I don't think there's, there's any green cards. Oh, Ms. McGregor. As you are making your way to the podium, please be reminded that comments are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public are invited to share comments. However, this is not intended to be a time for questions and answers. Lastly, participants may speak only once on the same topic and are asked to avoid statements that are personally directed, abusive, or obscene.
I'm coming today to talk to you about a program that we're going to be doing at Oakland County Parks on February 15. It's called Fireworks and Flannels. Kim, I work with your daughter-in-law. This is something Oakland County Parks has been working on for the last few months. It was going to be in conjunction with their township, but that's not working right now. But it's something that we've never had in the wintertime. We're going to have a 1K for our children, a 5K. We're going to have a wagon rides with a horse drawn, lighted trails, snow art, making puppets. Hopefully Rory will be there. Sliding down the hills. It's going to be a great free, free family event. So if you'd like to come for the kids, I've talked to Ms. Davis. We're going to have a booth for the school district there. We're just going to be highlighting what Waterford's all about. So please come out February 15. The 1K for the kids starts at 3:30. The 5K starts at 4:00. And the rest of the program starts at 5:00. So I hope to see you there with food trucks. The chamber's going to be there with cocktails if they want them. It's just going to be a live entertainment. Her son, again, is going to be part of that. So it's going to be a great day. So come out and enjoy the day.
All right. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. All right. We are on to our Board of Education reports. Does anyone have a report this evening? Member Donahue?
First off, I want to just thank everyone for the schoolwork recognition. Definitely not needed, but much appreciated by all the schools and staff. So thank you very much. Welcome to our new board members, Elizabeth and Kim. I'm no longer the new one. So thank you. Thank you very much. And I would be remiss without recognizing Sandy. And congratulations with everything. And enjoy retirement. So you will be missed. I really appreciate you taking the time to really sit down and explain to me some of the things with the budget and questions that I had. So thank you very much.
All right. Member Patricia?
I also want to thank our welcome, Kim Simon, Brett, Elizabeth McGregor, welcome. And thank Mike. Again, what, four, five years as president? I think you did a great job. I'm going to miss you. I enjoyed picking on you. It was so much fun.
You did?
Oh, I did. I haven't enjoyed it as much as I should have. No, it's a new one. But again, I think you did a great job. I truly, you stepped up. You did a wonderful job as a new person to come in and be president, take that role. It was absolutely spectacular. And thanks for all the food and gifts and everything else. It's a great time of year. You'll get used to it. It's fun. You say, oh, you don't have to, but this is, yeah, no, it's wonderful. Thank you.
Member Torres?
Also want to just congratulate the two new board members coming on. And, you know, you get here in your first meeting and you realize you're getting all these presents and you kind of think like, you know, maybe I don't, you know, I'm getting these and I haven't done anything. Well, just wait. You're going to. So you're going to earn those presents. So it's always a nice recognition. I think this month, this board meeting is always one of my favorites every year and only second to the graduation day. Graduation Day is always just inspiring and fantastic. So you got something really great to look forward to in the coming months. Also, I just want to remind everybody, there's the backyard battle that's going to be happening tomorrow at 7:00 PM. And then there's going to be, I believe, the Waterford United Girls game as well. Earlier than that, I think it's, I think it was 5:00 PM. Okay, 5:00. And then 7:00 PM is going to be the Mott versus Kettering. I love the decal that they put out there was Engage Dark Mode. It just reminds me of the Lions. So it was, that they put out there. So that's going to be tomorrow. And then just go Lions as well.
Member McGregor?
I also just wanted to take a moment to say thank you because this is amazing. And also, I wanted to give a special thank you. I asked Sandra a lot of questions about some of these contracts. So I appreciate your help and you getting back to me so quickly. And also, I wanted to say thank you to Kristen and Mike. I'm already learning a lot from you two. So I appreciate that very much. And one more, thank you, sorry. I also wanted to thank Joan Sutherland and Julie Jocelyn for the work that they did. And because they also helped to advocate so that we could learn some of these things before we got into the role. And that's a really big deal. So, thank you.
Member Ristich?
Yeah, really quick. So we've, member Torres picked up on all the great things that are happening on Friday. And I also just wanted to amplify, our Griffins Special Olympics team is playing at halftime, and they're playing against the Waterford Warriors Special Olympics team. So we've got a great, a great rivalry here. And I say that tongue-in-cheek because it's going to be great. They're going to play at halftime of the girls' game. Be there. It's going to be amazing. Come watch and cheer on some amazing athletes. So our own Waterford Griffins versus our Waterford Warriors Special Olympics team. And just so you know, the Waterford Warriors are often where our Griffins athletes go. So it's, it's going to be a great night. And I'm looking forward to it. And welcome, Elizabeth. Welcome, Kim. Congratulations. So really looking forward to this year. Thanks, everyone.
Yes. All right. And just to kind of summarize for everybody, I want to also welcome our two members. It's always nice to have fresh faces and, and different outlooks and different input. So we appreciate that you're both here and, and serving your community. It's, it's an honor to serve our community, and this is a great way to do it. This is an amazing district with amazing staff and students. And so welcome to our, welcome to our board. And again, congratulations, Sandy. I can't believe we're already, like, this is your last meeting, isn't it? Well, thank you for, for serving our district and for all you've done. We greatly... We greatly appreciate it, so you will be missed. And speaking of our backyard battle on Friday, if you'd like to come, there's not just the halftime show with our, our athletes, there's also the Waterford Mott Dance Team, which is going to be performing because they are preparing for their first competition at the Little Caesars Arena Saturday morning. So definitely come on, cheer them on. If you see the young blonde that looks like me, that would be my daughter, feel free to root her on. But also, I want to give a little shout out to Waterford Kettering's dance team because they had their first competition last weekend. So our, our teams are into their competition mode, and they could, could use a little support as well. And happy New Year, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, and we look forward to seeing you soon. If there's nothing further, this meeting is adjourned.